Just a reminder that audio is live. All right. We call this meeting to order pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes. The public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act along with a current copy of the Executive Order 2003 are available as attached to the agenda for this meeting. The agenda and attachments may be found at district OPS.org. The purpose of this meeting is to take action on the purchase of Apple devices for the district's one-to-one learning technology initiative. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy. Gotti.
Present.
Holman. Cracky.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Ryan. Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
And I'm going to go back up, Ms. Cassidy.
Yes, present.
And then Dr. Holman. So that's seven present.
Okay, I believe Dr. Holman's crossing over. I will entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Ryan and Dr. Holman. I believe Dr. Holman is going to join in later, but excuse Ms. Ryan, she's under the weather.
Kimara Snipe, still moved?
There's a motion by Ms. Snipe, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cracky, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cracky.
Aye.
Furman.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Seven aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. We're moving on to item C1A, the purchase of Apple devices for one-to-one technology initiative. I will defer to Dr. Logan and staff.
Good evening, President Snow and members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Kudos to our teachers and technology staff. I'd like to open this evening by extending a sincere thank you to our teachers and our information technology team for their ongoing support to our students and families throughout these past six weeks. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, as though I have often said Teacher Appreciation Week is every week. Want to especially recognize our teachers for their flexibility and for their can-do attitude during a difficult time when all of them who have worked diligently to ensure delivery of curricular materials to our students in a virtual environment. We are thankful for their commitment and support. They have certainly led the way. Since mid-March, we've all rolled up our sleeves to provide support where we can to deliver on the promise of public education to every student within the Omaha Public Schools. Tonight, the proposal before the Board of Education is intended to ensure all of our students have adequate access to the technology they need to perform their daily school activities and the connectivity which is crucial in order for them to perform those school activities. While we do not currently have answers to many of the questions before us as we plan for a myriad of potential scenarios in this fall, we do have some answers. What we do now know is that due to social limitations this virus has placed upon all of us, there is a high probability that we will operate in both an online and blended learning environment in the fall. The purchase request for iPad Air internet-enabled devices before the board is part of our proactive preparation for the fall. Whether our students are in the classroom or at their home, we want to ensure they have what they need to be successful. Current economic projections indicate that many families and communities around the country could be negatively impacted and may need additional supports that they currently don't require. We are currently working to diligently remove the obstacles we know some families are currently experiencing at their homes in terms of access to adequate devices and internet connectivity. This investment is necessary to support our students in a 21st century learning environment. It will also minimize disruption to our students' educations as our state and our country make preparations ahead of a potential second round of the virus this fall. I would also like to add that there have been a few questions about students sharing devices and where, as in normal conditions, we certainly do share devices because of the conditions of this virus. We know that it will be impossible for our students to share devices when they are in a school setting. This concludes my remarks for this evening. At this time, I turn it over to Mr. Dunn and to Dr. Sturba for questions regarding the purchase of these devices. President Snow, would you like to entertain questions at this time?
Unknown participant is now joining.
So I will now open it up for questions, but first, I just want to thank you, Dr. Logan, as well as your staff and your team that has been working every day since this virus has hit our community to make sure that our teachers are taken care of, our students and our families are taken care of, and that all their needs can be met in the future. And now planning ahead for the district with these technology devices will help our students and our families and our teachers in the future. So colleagues, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Crack.
I have questions and comments, but did you want to hear from Lisa Sturba or Mr. Dunn first, as she indicated?
No, we can go ahead and just take the questions and then go from there.
Okay. First thing I'd like to say that the staff I've talked to is very grateful to be able to connect with the students. And then I have some points here, maybe some questions and comments. First of all, we need to make certain the public understands the way we are using the iPads. They are not for personal use, so if they were included and only be able to provide the students with what it is that they are doing in regard to the district. And secondly, I know the packets of materials can be frustrating to parents, especially if the teacher has not had an opportunity to present the materials. And then someone said to me, it's very difficult for parents, if they are working, to come home and then go through that also. And my question is, how will we be evaluating and the grades be determined? Will that be a pass or not pass? I mean, so they can answer that later. And then the additional comment that I'm making that I am pleased to see, Zainab Loeser cursive and manuscript handwriting used in the packets, those are the ones that I have gotten and looked at, and I thought the upper grade elementary were very good. I had some questions with the primary, but this hopefully will result in some consistency from building to building with the handwriting and with what we see even in the building. So this continues to be a really good point, I think, that could evolve from this. And I've heard that some families have internet, but they don't have the Cox connection, so all of this is going to be very helpful. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this works and what happens, but in the meantime, of course, I would much rather be doing it another way, coming forward, going around schools, going to the tack building. This really is stymying all of us, even, you know, in addition to the children and their learning. So from a board member's perspective, I'd sure like to be right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cracky. Dr. Logan, do you want to answer her question about how we're going to prepare and let families know the proper use of the devices?
Well, I was going to defer to Mr. Dunn. One of the things that we are going to do is, upon approval of this purchase, is to plan, and we've already started the planning with Mrs. Utterback's team in conjunction with Mr. Dunn's team and with potentially our vendor, should this be approved, to provide parent training. That is one of the things that we did not have, the ability to do for this closure, and we realize that there is a significant amount of parent training that needs to happen in terms of the device and also in terms of working with your child at home. And we would be able to do that from January, I apologize, from June through the start of the school year. We'd be able to use support so that it can be done in various languages, and then also to use our vendor partner to provide some of this, as they've done this, you know, not just around the country, but around the world. And so those are some of the things. The last thing that I wanted to talk about a little bit, and Mrs. Cracky raised this, was even though we will have the devices, it doesn't mean that we won't be disseminating some of the packet material, because we know that children also need tactile, they need to be able to write on paper, and so when we look at a blended learning environment, means that it's a combination of not just using a device, it is also using some of the more traditional ways of learning, you know, through the traditional materials that are customary in our elementary schools. So we don't look at this as the be-all and end-all, but one of the things, we do look at it as an opportunity to make sure that we can give our children appropriate feedback, we can begin grading, because we will have taken away the barrier of all students having access to an appropriate device, and also students having access to the web so that it will not be a barrier. I hope I've answered your questions, and I'm tickled that you like the handwriting.
I am tickled, too. It's been a long time coming, I'm very excited.
Thank you. Ms. Gotti. I believe you had your hand raised.
Thank you. I was wondering if someone on staff could address some of the questions that board members have asked and that you've given us responses for, just so that from a public transparency standpoint, they're aware of those issues. And I also have a question that just came in right before the board meeting from a teacher who wanted to know if we'd be able to use some, if they would be able to use something like Google Classroom or another platform for teaching, as Microsoft Teams has been a bit challenging from the teaching standpoint, apparently for some teachers, and whether or not those are compatible with the Apple iPad. If you could answer that question and then those other questions, and then we had small sessions last week as well, and I just want to point out to the public, we did have conversation around that. And one of the questions that I had asked, and I know my constituents have addressed this before, in some of the schools that have the current one-to-one iPads, is just that appropriate content and places where students are going. And I've asked the district if they can maybe give parents the opportunity to have a way to communicate if they see their students using these devices to access material other than what is needed for educational opportunities.
Mrs. Gotti, thank you, all great questions, as always, and I will have Mr. Dunn kind of talk about some of the questions that were asked last week and some that were asked over the weekend from board members on behalf of their constituents. So, Mr. Dunn?
Yes, you bet. Can everybody hear me okay?
A little louder.
A little louder, okay, I apologize.
Close to your mic, thank you. It's fine, it's fine.
Is that better? Okay, President Snow and fellow board members, just recap a little bit about some of the conversations last week. You know, there was many considerations taken into fact when we decided what device to recommend, and obviously we know our main hurdles during this closure has been all students having a device and then having the ability to connect with their teachers because of limited internet. So taking a look at kind of all these factors, what we currently have in our environment, what the costs are, being able to provide, the potential to provide connectivity to the device as opposed to having a Mi-Fi or a hotspot to check out and additional devices and hardware to try to worry about or manage. The iPad was proposed, and you know, there's things that we already have in place with iPads. We already have a couple of schools that are following this model with one-to-one that have the data plan connected to it. So we did have some things already in place that we could draw from, some learning experiences. This is not like going to the Apple Store and getting an iPad that a student can use, you know, kind of individually, and for students that might be listening, that might be a little bit disappointing, but this is a district-issued device, and so every aspect of it is managed. The apps that the district approves can be installed, the content that students are going to be going out to is going to be filtered, and we can all do this centrally and based on policies that are appropriate for different age groups and different schools and programs. So, and to kind of, I think, answer Mrs. Cracky's point, too, that's really the main thing here, is that this is become, it's a learning instrument that we're providing our students and providing our teachers so that they can stay connected, depending on whatever our situation presents itself, you know, here in the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Gotti, do you have any other questions or any comments on that?
I would have to catch if Mr. Dunn could talk a little bit about the different platforms that will be on there, because I know that was a big part of Mrs. Gotti's question, the platforms that will be available, how we're not going to have social media, those kinds of things. I think those would be helpful. She has some really specific questions about platforms that she got from constituents.
Right, so if you could answer that question specific to the platform that would be used, and then if you could address some of that social media component of it, and then I think you've spoken to the fact that you've chosen the iPad because we currently have that. I know that there were a lot of questions out there about other types of devices, so I just want to make sure the public's aware of why the decision was made and why there isn't, wasn't a bid, because there was only a one-source provider.
You bet, I can address those. And then going back to your question about the platform, and I know, I think Google was mentioned there, currently we are under contract, we have been under contract with Microsoft, those are the, that's the platform that we provide and support. You know, any discussion that would be, or potential to go to something different would require another process to go through. The device does support the platform that we're currently on. We do have other devices that would have been potential to choose from, but cost becomes a situation that we, you know, have to address there. I think the average cost was somewhere over $760 when you looked at other devices, and then none had the technology within them to provide the connectivity. So looking at, you know, the timeline that we're under and not knowing some other factors that might be related to market conditions and things like that, putting together a plan that we thought was reasonably feasible and yet executable based on the circumstance and the timelines, I think were major considerations in this.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. Good evening, those that are listening this evening. I want to just echo the comments that everyone has pretty much said thus far. I want to thank the entire team, led by, of course, Mr. Dunn. He's done a fantastic job pulling all of this together in such a short time, he and the rest of the district staff. Obviously, this is a huge undertaking, so I want to thank you folks for all that you've done for the, getting these bids together and finding the best possible solution that we can as a district to provide this, this technology to all students across our district. It's just great to see. I do have a specific question. As Mrs. Gotti stated, we, as board members, have had small, small meetings, if you will, to go over this in depth before this, before the meeting this evening, so we got a lot of these questions answered. But we have also received quite a few questions from different folks in the community, teachers, staff members, and I got one in particular that really did get me thinking. I had a teacher from one of our information technology realms with, he's actually from Omaha South High, and he brought up a great point. How are we going to address some of the specialty software that's going to be needed for some of those specialty IT classes, specifically at the high school level? You know, coding classes, digital gaming classes, situations where Adobe products are going to be needed. Is this, are these iPads going to be conducive to some of the more specialized courses that we have in our high schools? How will that be addressed?
Yes, those are great questions, and obviously, we want to be able to try to answer every possible contingency that might arise going to a rapid one-to-one deployment. You know, some of those schools, and in a normal environment, if we were to go to a one-to-one deployment and have a singular device that's easily managed and can be supported centrally from the district, we still would have those situations in schools based on unique programs where they'd have some unique needs for students, and the technology might, different technology may be required. You know, under this plan with even pre-COVID, you know, a model would exist that would allow the district to provide the learning device that students need holistically across the district for every student, but then based on building needs and building budgets, they could provide those kind of unique solutions for different programs that they have. So I would see that model providing kind of answers to some of those questions. Inherently, there may be some unique situations where we have to look at maybe some alternative platforms for solutions when it comes to curriculum. I mean, we have, obviously, a very vast district, and not every little thing can be kind of sorted out or gone through on such a short timeline, but I'm confident that, you know, there are solutions. This isn't the first district to be one-to-one, or would be the first district to be one-to-one iPads nationally or locally, so we would have, obviously, some other avenues to provide, to get some insights and learn some things about how we might have to adjust a little bit.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the response, and obviously, this is, we're learning as we go, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Snipe.
Thank you, President Snow. I don't want to repeat everything that everyone has said, but I'm just very, very grateful that we have the team we do within OPS, and I'm very grateful that every time I have a question, which I typically try to do before we get to this point, they get answered and answered quickly. I do have a couple of questions that were, came up today when I was discussing with a few people, so I just want to ask those really quick, and they might have been discussed before, but we get a lot of information, so I forget things, so blame it on my head and not my heart. One of them was, and this was really for me, I was thinking about it, as far as like stock for repair, do we have that? Have we thought about it? I'm not sure. Like I said, that came up before, and then I was thinking, what if one needs to be replaced? What would be the wait time for a family if they needed to have one replaced?
Yes, those are great questions. So we did build in some overage, I believe it's one and a half percent, to have items ready on hand in case something needs to be immediately replaced. The care that's provided, the warranty care that's provided with this does allow for some overnight expediting of devices out to an address, and then there's a two-week window that allows the device that needs to be repaired sent back in so that those repairs can be made. The plan that's in the proposal is a three-year plan. It covers two instances of damage, or if there's loss of function, that that device is under warranty, and then because we're going with a preferred case, the, any, there is a fee that's associated, deductible every incident, a $49 fee, but that is waived when the preferred cases are used. So all intentions of trying to, in one way or the other, whether it's through the mail, overnight mailing, or whether it's because we have a device in stock, to get those devices to students or staff immediately so that we're not creating any further disruptions in learning.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Snipe?
Oh, thank, no, I was on mute, but I said, thank you, Mr. Dunn, I appreciate it. Thank you, President.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Smith?
We had addressed it before, but I just wanted to share publicly, so the timeline for getting those rolled out, we initially had said something about 2,000 of them getting to our kids before summer school started and then rolling out the rest of them. Is that still the case, or has that changed?
Yes, that would be the case. The start date for summer school is June 15th, and we will, we don't have a date yet on when that shipping is handled, is coming to us, that shipment is coming to us. We are also utilizing some professional services, so a lot of the readiness, the provisioning, the putting on of cases, all of those things are being done third-party so that when we receive the devices, they are ready to go to the sites to be checked out to students, and that same plan would be in effect for fall.
Thank you, perfect.
Mark, I also have a couple more questions that have just come in.
Go ahead, Ms. Gotti.
All right, so we've been getting, I've been getting questions here. So the first one I'm going to ask is about keyboards for middle and high schoolers and whether those will have extended Bluetooth, or whether the keyboard is an embedded keyboard, which I would assume is just comparable to what the iPad has today. So can you answer that question before I ask the next one?
Yeah, you bet. So this, the keyboard, the iPad has an embedded keyboard. There was an option to buy a case with a keyboard, but finding that there is some potential supply chain issues with that and having those ready in time, there's always an option to add a keyboard after the fact. There, when you start to get into some of the Bluetooth... There, there, when you start to get into some of the Bluetooth keyboards, what we found in the past, and this goes back to the experience that, you know, looking at some of this from ours, sometimes the number of Bluetooth connections in a classroom can create some issues with the connectivity of the keyboard to the device, so there's more of a wired connection. This would fall, you know, kind of in the category too, where more at a site base, they can make some decisions around where the keyboard was needed, or if they needed the keyboard. There's different ways to kind of approach that, you know, you can get a keyboard for every kid, or you can have keyboards to check out as needed, or you can have keyboards in classrooms where programs, the, the curriculum requires the keyboard, like language arts class or something like that. So kind of putting this into the category of more of a peripheral add-on, since they already do have that embedded keyboard, we knew, we would know that, you know, the functionality that was necessary would be there. But not knowing quite yet, having great assurance on what the supply chain would look like, you know, there, there's just some business kind of decisions we have to make around that.
Okay, so at this time, no wireless or other keyboards attached for the middle and high school, but considering purchasing those so that they would, there would be some available in classrooms to be checked out or in buildings where specific subject matter would dictate that those might be necessary?
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think it's one, you know, we'd want to, we have a little bit longer runway because, you know, there's different versions of key, the different availabilities of keyboards and what you can look at and get. And, you know, I think we'd have some more options there. There's only one case that, you know, provides the deductible waiver on the warranty and just not 100% certain that it would be ready for us.
Okay, perfect. All right, the next question is around obsolescence. And what, since we're purchasing everything at one time, and I know we've said multiple times that that's not ideal, what is the plan for obsolescence as these potentially could all need to be replaced very short period of time? And, you know, in a short window, correct?
That is a great question, and, you know, it's one that worries me a little bit too, and, and from the sense that, you know, we are making a large purchase and, and there's a lot of devices going out to students at one time. And, you know, trying to be very cost-conscious and, and being a very good steward of the dollars that are appropriated for technology for students in this district, originally getting us set up on a very sustainable cycle that would allow for refresh and to maintain a modern fleet. You know, that, this definitely presents a little bit of challenge to this, but I think we can get there because I think, you know, I looked at our current inventory and we still have iPads from 2011 that are in use. So we know that there's some durability, some, some ruggedness in terms of longevity of use. We know we'd have a warranty for three years. We would have to start kind of backwards planning from a future date and to say, you know, identify where we would want to enter that kind of refresh and who would get the devices refreshed first, and then who would be kind of on a more of a delayed schedule. And, you know, that would obviously be something that we would take a little bit longer look at and try to get some more in-depth analysis on, you know, I think a lot of that in particular would be just where is the one-to-one device really needed the most in a non-COVID situation and where is it not? And I think we could work backwards from there and figure that out.
Okay, that sounds great. And then this one's probably for Dr. Logan, and I'll figure out how to phrase this so that it correlates to the item that we're discussing tonight. But the question I've gotten from quite a few parents is, are we purchasing these because we're in anticipation that we may not be able to start school right away in August? Or are these add-ons for starting school in August and having that product available to be able to use that device?
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. I think if I, my crystal ball was working that well, I, I, it would be great. I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I can tell you that we have prepared several calendars that we are going to share with board members very soon about different contingencies and potential scenarios. I am very certain that we will be called upon to participate in community mitigation again. I don't know when it'll be, I don't know how long it'll be, but it certainly will be. I think another thing that's really important, and we were talking about this earlier in our policy committee meeting about, with, with our attendance, is that we can also 100% expect that there will be spot outages where we have to close classrooms, schools, because we have cases and we have to have students quarantine, staff members quarantine, and, and such the like. And so this will help us be prepared for all of those scenarios with students and staff members being prepared to kind of go in and out of brick-and-mortar attendance to remote learning with, without having to worry about what the, what kind of device a student is going to have to be able to use. But I really appreciate the question, and I, I really wish, I, I really do, I, I know you have a graduate and two graduates, if I'm correct, that's correct, that you have two graduates. And I certainly, from, from a mom's perspective, have so much understanding of, of your position and, and that of all of our parents who are, who are facing, they're having a senior that is, it has, having a very different experience. And all of us, I just don't know. I just don't know. I, I, I have some, I have some, you know, wonderings about what I think it's, it's going to happen. And I do think that we could be out for some time when we have a intersection of flu season and Corona. So we'll see what, what that is. I took my best shot.
No, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate you trying to answer that question. And then I know we talked about some of these devices being used for summer school, so I've gotten some of those questions of, have we announced when summer school will be? I don't think we've announced that yet. And, and that there will be some students who will be attending summer school with the devices that are purchased. Is that correct? And, and there will be opportunity for teachers to be trained prior to that time period? And I think those are some of the questions I'm getting as well.
Absolutely. So we look at a couple of different kinds of trainings. Well, one for summer school is going to be announced, I believe it is Wednesday, the dates, and then families who, we're going, we will have summer school in elementary school for 2,000 young people. And that information will come out a little bit later this week. A district-wide summer school for the kids who are in the most need of, of, of support during the summer. And so we look forward to sending that out on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I'll be sending, I know I've provided something in the board updates today, but more information, more robust information a little bit later this week around those three items. And then the devices will be in so that we'll be able to use them. We'll be able to do some learning from that too, over the summer with those devices and our, with our elementary students. So we look forward, we look forward to, to being able to do that. And, you know, we have to be honest about supply chain. We are at the mercy of the supply chain, which we all know has been disrupted. And our vendor has shared with us that they are, have a reasonable confidence that they will be able to provide the 2,000, obviously, on time, and then the 54,000. One of the reasons we wanted to, and I very much appreciate everybody taking time out of their busy Monday to have the special meeting, is to get this approved and to move it forward so that we are in the queue with this particular vendor to get this, to get this moving. So thank you, and thank you for the questions.
Yep, thank you very much. And I guess the only other one that I have, and it kind of ties to the RFP, and that is, as we think about getting that RFP, I'm assuming there wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying for connectivity during the time period when we're not in school. And so is that part of that RFP as we go out for that, so that we're not paying for 12 months when the devices may not be used during that period?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Dunn to answer the, the specifics on the RFP that was released last Wednesday.
I mean, yes, that would be ideal. And not knowing how all vendors might respond to a cellular data plan, you know, there are definitely going to be some elements that we're going to want to take a look at with regards to each of those proposals to see how they best fit our needs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much for answering those questions for me and for the constituents who asked them.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, Sehnaan, I, I do have two questions. One around training staff to be able to utilize these devices. And, and I know we're going to be preparing training for the summer and beginning of school. Would this require us to hire additional staff to do these trainings? And to also additional staff to be tech support or to help teachers if they are struggling utilizing these devices to give instruction?
Mr. Snow, again, I'm going to have Mr. Dunn answer those for you. We have worked that out. His, he and his team have worked that out very well, so I'll have him answer.
Thank you.
Yes, training is such a vital and critical component to all of this. You know, it's one thing to purchase devices and hand them out, but it's a complete other thing to make sure that staff, students, and families are familiar enough and have the skills necessary, the knowledge necessary to be able to engage in learning activities. We will take a look at, you know, every possible resource that we have throughout the district, whether that be at the building level, whether that's at central office level, through the variety of different departments, to see how we can coordinate all of our efforts so that we can provide that training. There's also a number of free offerings that come along sometimes with devices that we would utilize and leverage as well. And I think just having another look at, in a typical school year, where our priorities are focused in terms of professional development and what we're using that's already in place to help provide that training for all staff, all students. And I think, as Dr. Logan mentioned, even families with some of other departments, so they can be comfortable and know how to use the device and, and be able to conduct the business of learning.
Thank you. I know we talked about, you mentioned staff being trained and families, I believe Dr. Logan talked about training our parents on utilize, 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 excuse me, using these devices. I have one more last question on this, and it was about the keyboards and replacing damaged devices. So would it be best for us to purchase a set of keyboards, you know, if we know that potentially some of our middle school and high school students are already going to need a keyboard? If it's at the discretion of the school, if you have that many students, you're, you could potentially have 500 students that might struggle with it, and those principals might need those keyboards. Is that something that you're proposing later on down the road as we go through the summer? As well as a plan for damaged devices, if they have to be returned and it takes two weeks for the turnaround? Is the district giving them a replacement device, or are we giving them an old computer that we have until they get their device back?
Yeah, those are, those are good questions. And, and I think we have, we have a number of options there. I think with, with regards to the keyboard, again, being able to provide a, a, a attached keyboard that students can use, especially in the middle schools and the high schools, you know, we could kind of engage in that process a little bit further to find out what maybe more of the specific needs are, where that might apply, you know, there, there's obviously, you know, some level of uncertainty too, depending on, you know, whether we're in school or out of school or not in school, and, you know, how, how much reliance we're going to have to have on the, on the keyboard going forward. And I think there's other options with keyboards that we can take a look at that might be more of a cost savings for us. And, and I think, you know, again, trying to get a better feel of supply chain and, and what's out there and what we can get, I, I, I still think that's probably one of the areas we can do a little bit more work and try to find out what the best solution is that is going to be fitting for our district. The repair, the, the way that, you know, it works right now under the app pair, the, the device that's damaged or needs repair, we put a request, we can put a request in and they will overnight us a device to replace that. Again, not knowing, you know, fully what demands are going to be in the fall, you know, worldwide or across the nation, and what that supply chain will look like, we will have a stock to have devices on hand. And this is not only just to address the repairs, but, you know, if we have, have a change in enrollment or a change in staffing, and just, just having some things immediately on hand is typical in any one-to-one deployment so that you can substitute in something quicker sooner rather than later. And then obviously, we would have another option of, of some older devices, and, and that's just the practice and the purpose there too, so that we could kind of identify exactly what the specific need is and do everything we can to meet that specific need as, as quick as possible.
Thank you for that. I mean, I know it's hard answering a lot of unknowns in the future, and I appreciate that, Mr. Dunn and Dr. Logan. And with this, one last question, I just brought this up to my teachers and staff. Will building staff be able to have, that are given instruction, will they be able to have a connectivity provided for them? Because I know not everybody's connectivity is the same, so they might have a device, but they might not have the same speed as someone else. Are we looking down the road to help that, add that for our teaching staff that, to be able to connect with their students?
Yes, that is the plan. We want teachers and students to be connected without barriers. And I will make another comment, President Snow. We, I really do really appreciate all the questions, and, and I'm happy to answer any of them. That's the only way that we can fully put together a plan that is reasonable and that can work for everybody. And, and we, you know, if we are not keeping our ears open to questions from any source, then, you know, we, we, we're not doing our jobs. We need to be able to try to think about all those different possibilities that come up and, and put a plan in there to eliminate barriers, basically.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm sure community members will continue emailing board members and staff and Dr. again, as we move through this process. Hope everyone understands, this is a learning curve, all going through this, not just Omaha, but the entire world. I believe this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve item C1A.
Move approval.
By Mrs. Crackey, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question.
Mr. Pearlman.
So this is maybe kind of a technical question that could be answered later. And, and Mr. Snow, I think you touched on this a little bit, but if, if data is going to be provided to students and staff, what sort of, I'm trying to think of the best word for this, what, what sort of level of speed, I guess is maybe the word that comes to mind, would, would be provided on a typical data plan? And, and, you know, I guess there's two components, how much data per month, and then what sort of speed is anticipated? Is that all to be determined at this point?
Yes, basically, all aspects of your questions would be parts of the RFP from vendors that we would want to evaluate. And then, once we have that information, it helps us to make a better determination as to what solution would best fit our needs.
Okay, is, is part of that RFP asking potential vendors if they have the availability for 5G? Because I think Omaha is one of the handful of cities in America that I think some companies are providing that.
Yeah, that's a good question. Currently, the devices aren't 5G-enabled. So without getting into, you know, maybe particulars that a vendor might, you know, need, you know, for a response, that's kind of just the devices, we're not, I know the 5G network is there in places in Omaha, but our devices aren't 5G-compatible.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize if iPads even were, so, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Pearlman.
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Snipe?
Hi.
Snow?
Hi.
Cassidy?
Hi.
Gadding?
Hi.
Pearlman?
Hi.
Hi.
Crackey?
Hi.
ADI?
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone that called in today, as well as board members and staff that put together this presentation. I appreciate it. And I'm excited that we are doing everything we can to meet the needs of our students, our family, and our staff. Thank you so much. There is no closed session, so good night. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.